...sent by email to our official newspapers, the Aspery Press, and the Hill Star. Please stand in pledge allegiance. My pledge allegiance...
To our flag, to the flag's integrity, and to the people of this nation, on my behalf, I declare the individual an individual to the community of this town.
Mr. Alvarez. Mr. What?
Bridger.
Mr. Buckusco.
Present.
Ms. Havens.
Present.
Mr. Romero. Mr. Robinson.
Present.
Mr. Flower.
Present.
Mr. Bass. And in honor of the July 25th, the March 25th. And the motion of...
Yeah.
...the first... Anyone who can say it. Any changes that you can say, any change minutes. I'm just hoping that's something you do that. All in favor? So pass. And we're moving on to the whole business. Dave is going to be speaking.
Thanks everybody for coming. I appreciate you moving to the new location where we have too many people and we do. So this was a good decision. So hopefully you know we received a notice of violation from the North County Health Department for a noise violation. It was received on, it was from a concert, Pat Eye concert on, on June 5th. And I spoke to the Health Department numerous times to explain the code and how the enforcement works. If the Health Department comes out again and it's over a certain decimal reading which is sixty-five, it's a thousand dollar fine. If that's two thousand, three thousand. So now we have to make a decision as a board. And so I think there will be a lot of people who would like to share their thoughts. And I will tell you when you do the public comment, period. It's not going to be a discussion back and forth. We just want you to come for a public comment to, to share your thoughts. As we have a notice of violation noise, we have to make a decision. You know, what we're going to do, uh, deal. And after the public, uh, comment, then the board will have a discussion, a review discussion, and the board will vote on the decision. So we want you to have a chance to share your opinions at the moment. So if this is my work here, I'm going to turn this on here. If you're interested in talking, just come around the back or if you're on the side, come up. Just make sure you give your name and where you live in town. And then we'll make sure this is documented in our minutes. Okay? And we'll have a discussion after the public comment. Right?
We'll have a discussion.
Okay. So change of plans and start. We're going to have a discussion first as a board and then a public comment. And then either discussion or a vote after that. Okay?
One of the other things that I was looking at was trying to figure out when our concerts had started. Uh, I believe the first one we had was with, um, Pat back in 2014.
Big dog, too.
Yes, I think it's one year since this year. So I was just, um, you know, a little concerned that this has now become an issue. So we wanted to make sure that we were doing everything legally and sort of potentially through our own meeting and trying to see what's best for not only the library, the community as well.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? The, the way that I see the situation is, um, we can move the concerts to a different location. Right now, the Ebro Band is on August 26th. The class is open. We have a reserve just in case that's your decision. We also have, um, Taylor Pavilion available. We're packed. We have, um, Taylor Pavilion having the music go out to the beach. Problem is, um, parking September 18th. I'm talking to the mayor about it. We can do that. Or we can have the concerts and I can do everything that I can to try to keep it under the decimal level. Uh, we've already had one concert where we had three musicians and we were right at the edge without having a drummer and a saxophone. Now again, it wasn't the, um, calibrated machine comes from the Health Department. It was, you know, it was inaccurate, so it's not very accurate. But if the person that reported this reports again or says, oh, we're going to have the concert and the reading, I just want the board to note if the reading is spikes above sixty-five, it's not per system. A number of time, the Health Department has got three people there and supervisors that there will be a, you know, a thousand dollar fine. So, um, any of you who have any questions? What's, want to share?
Currently, the... Ain't nobody wants me here. P A C is down. Currently, we are not fined. First step, I guess, is a warning. Second step, a thousand dollar fine. First fine should be sent to a superior. It escalates from there onto three thousand plus add-ons. So there's a clock. That's correct?
That's correct.
When you did that informal survey during the last concert, did we have the property line?
So it's the way, it's where it's at, that person's property line. That's how they, whoever makes the...
So it's a virtual property to make a complaint based on the sound levels at their property?
Their property line, yeah. Not, not how...
So we're starting at property?
Yes. And that's what it says. Yeah. Any residence property line. So it's not in the end of ours, which we read some of this code. It's a little bit confusing, but at one point I thought it was that. They, they informed me that's not correct. It's at the property line of the person that called the Health Department.
And this is at the level of the Department?
That's correct.
And right now, we have not engaged council. We want to pay for, for quite a, we, 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 as a mayor, a special...
Correct.
Mike, if you should...
So as of now, we haven't engaged council in terms of that aspect. When it was brought up last year, I did, uh, talk to our, uh, to the town attorney about and tried to communicate with the individual and compromise.
Want to mention the compromise we did do?
So last year, what we did was, we, um, we, we asked them if there were certain concerts that we could, you know, continue hearing if you left. Um, this year, we moved a few concerts to the Circle of Friends, which, uh, in my opinion, the bad thing turned out to be a good thing. At the Circle of Friends, when the, the Beach Music Band was there, it was their best day in terms of sound food, the few hours to go there to Circle of Friends and Special Beats Cafe. They agreed, they enjoyed it, the parents enjoyed it. Uh, we did move, uh, Tom Brennan and Gail White, uh, to the Circle of Friends this week, which was Thursday and Saturday. The problem is with, with the two other bands that are coming up, Ebro and Pat Eye, um, they're larger and it would be more difficult to do it there. We couldn't have Pat Eye there with the parking. Uh, the Black Ties, we, instead of having a drummer and a, I think it was a saxophone, we just had three guitarists. And moved the speakers to be still were close to the decimal level. But again, that's on our app. It's not the machine that's required by the Health Department by a cert, by a person. It has to be calibrated on that, so.
So the library has been trying to do everything they could to make sure that everyone is happy. And unfortunately, it still seems to be an issue because the individual did come to the Black Ties concert to register any concern.
The only thing that I, I was discussing earlier, um, with Chairman, there is an exception in the, uh, in the, um, in the law, which talks about public celebrations that are government-sponsored, government-led events. So I don't know if it's an issue of that anywhere. I haven't done a little bit of research, but I think, um, it might be a little bit of a stretch to say that every concert is a public celebration or, or government-led event, but I think it might not. So I mean, in terms of future and in terms of, you know, whether or not we continue at the library, then sure enough, we can find that, you know, dealing that way, that might be a way to, you know, obviously, I'm not here to deliver advice, I'm just saying that that might be, of course, it is a public event and, um, it might be a way to know whether us people, whether or not, you know, it qualifies, you know, in this, in this court, you know, a judge will decide. And that's, uh, that's what it is. So, uh, something for the board to, to, you know, consider. From the notice, you know, it seemed to create a clear cut that, you know, if we do something that is below sixty-five decimal, you're required to stay away from this. So, you know, I don't think, because at least we're, we're required, which, I don't think it's... Or moving it to the layers of that, suggest to my board to be, to have a team of, like, uh, with different sections of town, which would have the added benefit of bringing the concerts around the community instead of having it from the library. Again, it's a board decision as to whether or not to do that. And of course, here, um, in another place, we, if we don't, you know, if we do this all here, or almost, anybody can complain, it's always, it's always, unless it's a public celebration. So, you know, kind of like a very gray area there, but, um, it's still an exception.
It's got spaced out in the long, compared to, you know, the example where this individual was comparing with a band, it, I think we'd be okay.
I mean, we also have a piano concert, which could host one of the concerts, you know, if you have a favorite in town that, that can serve the host. I just, I don't care if that's a possible suggestion.
Okay, I think we're going to go to, uh, public comments now. Dave is going to go on the mic. Please remember to mention your name as well as where you live.
Tess.
Good evening, guys. My name is Joe Schatt. I'm a member of, uh, I can see the library in front or from my back door, from my porch, back there. Just, you know, what we were talking about, what's missing here is to complain, or the person living off, like, I think he complained. Who is this? I mean, this is the public forum. I think the public has to write it out, most people there speak, um, and go, who is it? I think the public has to write it out. I really do. So who is it? So who is this? So you, you don't feel it's right to disclose it? Well, yes. So you tell me, no, it's no. Okay. I disagree with you, but you have, you have a chairman of the board and yourself, uh, no. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm breaking the law. So is the chairman of the board rule in this particular case?
It is a specific case in which, um...
Jim, the, the response did not indicate, notice of violation did not indicate individual, and we were not informed of the individual.
Mike, I didn't understand.
Uh, the notice of violation didn't indicate individual, and we were not specifically informed who made the complaint. We, we didn't, we didn't over it, so as a public board, we don't want to make a statement for that.
Okay. That's, that's crystal clear, I understand. I mean, it is to be that, um, the board isn't like a legal label here, you're behind a legal label. And, um, it's, the people here are upset and marveled, but again, I always say, we're living in a world of legality and morality, so I think you guys are stuck. I like the mayor's idea of an exception in the law. I think that should be explored. Having said that, I don't know what else to say. I mean, it's, it's a really bad situation, and I think, um, I think we should, you know, do everything we can to, to see if we can beat this down. And I'm always afraid of somebody else, uh, I mean, these people here, the new audience, who live a life closer than the so-called anonymous complaint, and they're very happy with it. So, you know, this is, to me, it's very indicative. I don't know about the board, but I don't know. I think we should explore every, every kind of possible, possible channel. Thank you.
I still want to know what it is.
My name is Mark. I'm a student of the five hundred and ten. And, uh, my wife's just, I have to be careful what I say. No, in all seriousness, uh, you guys talked to this person about, like, once you go to dinner or something for two hours. Okay.
It's me, Mark. I'm, I'm all right.
But in serious, I mean, I kind of go in, I was chatting with a whole team, that's a great job at the library. I actually think it helps with the property values for the houses, because people want to come here, act like, I'm like, I don't go to Waltons, we travel a lot, but the ones I go to, I have friends coming from all over places, including, uh, Maryland. And it gives you a good feeling for, uh, Bellmar. It also gives the guys that are working more exposure for their business, because people buy stuff and, um, in the town, they're bringing it back. So it's like, it's, uh, it's just amazing that somebody can be so self-centered, that they don't care about people's ability to say. And then also, you have to give your circle of, um, friends and stuff like that, that it's like a really good time, everybody has fun. And then it's like one person is stuck and all these people, what the heck's wrong with you? And then, uh, what else could I have said? Because I don't know about... No, that's it. I don't know.
Good job.
No, just thank you guys for a great job. It's a great thing. And we had a great time. Everybody's included. I mean, you can't beat it, and it's a lot of work and, you know, again, I know Sharon pretty well, and those guys do a great job. I mean, it's just something that, I mean, you do this, you just got to stop all of a sudden, hold short. I mean, every place you go to, every town has that music. And I get you, if you carry that little thing, you can stop everything. So I really think that the person has to be there eventually, and then said, what is your problem? And then from there, it's quite solid, because we love everybody, don't we? And, um, so that's really something that has to happen. I still think you should do it in the library, um, next time. And if you don't, I think that'd be bad. I don't think it really should stop. I felt that Brian, Susan, we'll do it on our apps, we'll press the screen, but we don't want to stop it, so. And Brian's been here forever, so that's about Washington. But anyway, I have a probably something to say later. That's all for now.
Perfect. Hi, I'm Jane. Where am I? This is Jane. Um, I just wanted to make the comment on the half of a lot of angry moms in a contract who can't be here, but they send me as the voice piece. Um, when we asked my daughter to explain to people where we live, she says, Mr. Rogers' neighborhood, right? I'm really emotional. And it's because eventually this is what makes our community, our community. It's what makes our children love the library. Oh, that am I. It's what we're doing and happy to say that you're, you're, you're a manager, it's our kids' school. And it's just really a shame that there's another person living on our streets, who are our street, living in our town, who's not supportive of this. No one buys the space here, um, because of the tourists, right? And they're coming to try to learn this because we know now when I'm staying in this, because we have concerts at our library. So unfortunately, I have no solutions, but a lot of the angry moms need my dedicated support and want to see this stuff keep happening.
Eric. Fifteen Avenue. Uh, you answered the first question I had before, which was, how are vessels and where? But if this is an anonymous complaint, how in any way, I won't use any of those other words, can you measure it? If you don't have our ears, is that simple? And also, is this just the beginning? Is somebody going to become a coward and say, ooh, we don't want the Seacoast tour, we don't want Iron Plaza? So we can't give in to something that's so joyous to... This is one of the things what was just said. Iron Plaza, many others, and they love, you know? So I don't want to give in. The Health Department has to work with a municipality, not just create a break wall. So if you don't know who it is, how in, do you know, where to measure? Is that simple?
Hi, guys. Students of eighteen eighty third Avenue. I happen to work at the library's circle, I'm allowed to speak. I think we should try and vote to keep going and having a concert at the library. It has someone that works there and some patrons coming in. There is a very strong connection between the concerts and the services that the library provides. We already do a ton of things at the plaza, we're on the beach, but the, having those people come to the library and then walking into the computers, check out our books, our pad pillars, you know, whatever's happening, it's really important to our community. So I think that whatever we need to do to keep the concerts going there is well worth it. That's my view.
Got a t-shirt on.
This is certainly... Hi, guys. Quick story. The first concert, two thousand and fourteen, we were residents, uh, we were renting on Seventeenth Avenue, West Bellmar, but, uh, we had a friend who was living at Bellmar. She told us something about this concert. I said, we're, we're bikes down, and we were at the concert, and we kept looking to our left, there was a for sale sign in front of what is now our house. And we looked it up, and it was, you know, way over price, and we haven't been winning. But as the months went by, concerts went by, over the next two years, the price of house came down, and we were in a little bit of a position, so we went to the house and we scheduled the closing date for the June concert at Bellmar. So that's how we feel about waiting, guys, too. We've watched how you unify a lot of itself. So my first comment is, thank you. The thing about the public, uh, celebration, um, I think it's, you have to stretch it. I don't know, there's no definition, right?
Well, I'm not going to make a comment, it was already finished, but...
Okay. But that'd be the thing, is, um, you could contact your state representative to see if they can cart out a written exception within the industry pro regulation or even amend it to the statute. And I suggest that because, uh, in my experience, uh, as an entire professional, I did something like that for a client a long time ago. Took a while. Uh, you needed a little bit of eating some juice. You need to contact the right people, as the mayor should know how that works. Uh, but that might be what happened, a way to not happen overnight, but if you can get an exception that specifically addresses maybe the timeframe or the decimal or the fact that you're at the library, or there's something along those lines, uh, would be an admirable way of stopping the law. Thank you.
Hi, John Falk, uh, Eleventh Avenue. I'm actually around the corner from the last, a full disclosure, a addition to the neighbor. I'm also a member of one of the bands that has played there for the last couple of years since they were arrested with that crazy song. Um, my first complaint is that sixty-five decimal, we really love, I looked it up, we're out here, it's the volume of a normal conversation. Uh, my comparison, seventy decimal is a vacuum counter. So it sounds to me like we're stuck with dealing with an, uh, ordinance or something like that, that is just incredibly low, and if they're sort of going to be serious, we're stuck with that. As a member, we really love these concerts. This is from my back door, you know, I walk along, just to travel a lot. And if I get down here, I can go back inside. As a band member, I love playing, uh, you play bars or locations around, a lot of you who like to listen, who don't want to go out late, don't want to go to bars, I think playing at the library is just a wonderful opportunity for other people, including myself on CD, while I'm using the CD on a long chair. I think, to make, or copy what somebody else said, it's one of the things that makes it a wonderful place to live. One of the points that you mentioned earlier was about moving the location around. My own suggestion, if you're going to move it, don't move it around to various different locations, pick in one slot, because I think if you have multiple locations, no one's going to know where to go for any specific event, just create confusion. And I would really prefer that it stay at the library. And then the last thing, there's one point is, I just can't help from what's been said, whether you're claiming, really have anything to do with how or why those decisions, so I don't know what to say about it.
Hi, uh, Jane Daly, I'm in Bellmar. We love these concerts. We listen to our porch, but sometimes we're in the mood to see people, and we walk over and there's sense of community. And I remember seeing you over there with the dog chair, and I'm, I haven't seen you in a while, and there's a lot of that going on. And I've been here since two thousand and four, and Bellmar's kind of a divided town with the politics and the St. Rose versus public school and Northern and Southern. I mean, it just goes on and on and on. But for those concerts, everybody's friendly and happy to see each other. I think it's a good thing for community. And we had had a birthday party for a bunch of us having our own birthdays, and we had my music, and I asked, you know, is there any rule to this? And I was told, no, just have it shut down by ten P M. So maybe somebody should go and say, well, you can have it at the library until eight, or you can have it at Jane Daly's Trotaway until ten. I, I just hope something can work out with the... I, I just hope something can work out with the one that's our apple. It's not fair for the rest of the town.
I just heard someone whispering and I just wanted to raise, what does this mean for porches? I mean, you have 30 porches throughout, a whole band throughout the dead. How many complaints do you have to rat on residents' heads to be clear where to go?
Good evening. Jim Paul is 10th Avenue. Uh, I have been here as many years as some of the speakers have. I came here just a few summers ago, our first church here in Baltimore. I can tell you that when I came down to see the house on the way that's like, it happened to be unconscionate. Uh, it was, believe it or not, one of the reasons why we liked 10th Avenue more than we loved the neighborhood. When I pulled up, there was a concert going on. There was just such a sense of community there, such a great spirit. Uh, it made, it's a part of the fact of Baltimore. And I can tell you that again, as a newcomer to this community, I understand the conundrum of the chairman trying to deal with a legal challenge, but also trying to do what's good for the best majority of the people who are here today. No one is tonight, or maybe some people who have spoken, who agree with the fact that issues cease. Uh, it is sometimes difficult as elected government officials to look in the face of a legal challenge and to take a hard position. I would say to you respectfully, this is probably one of those opportunities where you should. I don't think that you should allow one person to change the course of action for the community. Baltimore actually lives because of these kinds of things, because of these celebrations, because of the real proactive nature of trying to make community, a sense of community within the borough of Baltimore. Uh, it's allow one person to challenge the legal law. However, you still need to take certain steps to make it defend it. You mentioned before that you'd go some changes and they need to try to mitigate the problems. You obviously know the person that they're with, and I'm not asking you that. I know Jennifer's been on. They'll leave out me that I've been asked to. But, uh, since you know that, one of the things that I'd like to suggest the pressure on this area is to just reorient the use of the space. Right now, you're facing the library, facing out, perhaps if you're, I used to reside on property, facing damage towards the ocean, it may help mitigate. There are things that you can put up that'll mitigate too. There are portable, uh, sound insulated packs that can be purchased, as I can see in an open office setting. Any place behind the, uh, performers or behind the speakers, yeah, will reflect and shield some of the sound that may be reflected further north up the street. All those things are the, and some of those things you've probably already done. I would respectfully suggest that you, uh, very, in a very detailed way, indicate all those things so that if you do the like of challenges, the judge has an opportunity to see what specific steps you took from what it used to be to what it is today. All those things that you did, moving the concert out of locations, changing the speakers, selecting different bands, telling the musicians not to bring certain instruments, should all be registered in a very detailed report that you put together so that if you have the, the interest, like we, I think, in opening it to challenge this, you can present it to the judge. I would think that a county judge would find it harder pressed to go against a community that's taken such great steps on something that's existed for 14 years. I don't know if those persons lived in town, but if they moved into town, you know, more than 14 years ago, maybe they have a case. Uh, but if they moved into town recently, they moved into town on this procedure. You accept it and you should move forward. I think in such a, you know, the mayor's told me before about municipal, uh, celebrations. I did also review that, or about that, through the county. Um, one of the things that you can suggest, maybe you're probably doing this, but just throwing that for consideration, is actually doing a formal resolution of proclamation to establish useful celebration days on days that happen to comport with the days of the library and encourage it throughout the community. That can be an underpinning for the defense to say that things are community based and not just municipal, government based, not just library based. In the eyes of the board, they sometimes do library boards itself in separate, distinct, covering bodies. But if the government body raises what the library is doing as a government sanctioned event, it can be a more defensive, if you would say, support. So I wish you luck. If it's a thousand dollars, it's a concern, I can't complain about the else here today, but I'll contribute a hundred dollars to the fine.
I'll give you 200 if you tell me who the guy is.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jennifer Villalobos. It's been a long, long year, you know, I'm here every month on Saturday. Um, there's nobody, except for a few that I see here that are neighbors that can call the library or call my phone with my family. My family is at the library ever since today. Uh, it is intertwined who we are as Baltimoreans. And I know because somebody who's been on my porch will understand where my porch sits. Uh, if you'd like to put the speakers on my porch so that they face the ocean as entirely possible too, we can do remarks, and we can start rotating through the train of obviels and horners and purges and blight. Uh, but the reality is, and I'm looking at, at my kind of, is how this is pending and these great programs and these anecdotes are lovely. And we all agree that we love the concerts, but let's get some solution. And I think the mayor provided the path towards the solution. And some folks here have had that kind of thing. And I would say that based on some half-assed evidence, um, you know, the concept of local governments sponsoring events involves a connection to regional government and event. And I think that we can easily just look at our tax bill and say that, well, we pay a certain amount of taxes to keep the library vibrant and alive, and do anything to do. And all it takes is promoting specific government and library initiatives. Here's one of these things from, from my take, it's qualified as an event that is some government sponsored event. So I think rather than dancing around on this desk level nonsense that will never forget, the path towards making this something that we keep at the library as a, as a center of our hearing is to, is to make each one of these days a little bit better. And if people can, can live near the lake and tolerate the seafood festival for three consecutive dates, which is definitely way louder than the concert in the library. I think if you can have four or five concerts at the library for type of specific conditions, whether it's the circle friends, it's not like a different community, it's another thing, don't make sure you're positive of each one of these things. You know, we're creative as a community. And this, certainly from what I'm gathering, is gathered here to tell you that they support these things, not only existing, but staying at the library as the center of our, of our community here. So I think that I'm happy to, as somebody who works as media teacher, I'm happy to help figure out the sound solutions, that would be helpful. But I do believe that we are in a spot here to, to really dig in and see this is who our community is. Whereas where, maybe they gather people, but doesn't shy away and gather people even if it's something that needs to be created for yourself. So I encourage you to, to take the mayor's advice to look a little bit more about what these local government sponsored events could be. Because I really do believe, you know, I go to love the shelter, but I do believe that the path is towards a solution at, at sanctioning these things. Thank you. Totally appreciate it.
Hello, Bradley Thomas, 69th Avenue. I just wanna echo a lot of what was already said. Um, I, I, do you think that concerts like this, gatherings like this, is one of the things that make Baltimore is what makes it such a great place to live, such a great place to raise family, and such a great place to throw? Right? And I think that these concerts are, um, just such a really nice thing for kids and, um, you know, seniors and just the whole community get together and stay close to each other. So what I think is that if these concerts aren't a public celebration of our community, then what is, right? Uh, so I think I would echo that that is, shouldn't be the path to go. Because I think 65 vessels is, you're not gonna get there. Um, and I also want to echo that I think it's important to do that at the library. I think that there's concerts at Piano Plaza, there's concerts at ours. I think in being at the library is really important. So I would encourage you towards to, to take that step. Thank you.
I started with this statement. I keep looking at this exception to the public celebration. And, you know, of course, we all know the public celebration. It's just that, you know, I want to rule, it's a public celebration. And it's obvious that, you know, these concerts are a public celebration just to say that, you know, it's a gathering that's open to a media dependent by the general public. And can cause a lot of, lots of different number of activities. One of the big concerts and useful performances that we have. So I mean, I think maybe the way to go, as some of the speakers have said, is we don't need to worry about the vessels and any of that stuff. Because I think, I think our position as the board should be to write back to Mr. San Giada, who's the heart health coordinator, and say, you know, "We have been this public celebration. We're going to get this for the council. I'll see that we maybe have the next meaningful, next evolution, the support of the celebration at the library because every summer in having concerts, outside concerts as part of our summer festivities." And I think we should just say that, you know, continuing with the concerts at the library and, uh, with being a public celebration and exception to the, uh, to the, to the rule that they decide. And it's, it's, it's.
More than 65 vessels, I think.
We did have some emails that came in, but it is running a little late. Are there any other speakers that wish to come forward before we do the board discussion?
I just had a one question for us. I'm gonna stand up. Can you make a, a law that we don't have one of the decibels of in Baltimore?
Uh, one of the things that we talked about at our last meeting was, and I don't know if you ever had a chance to check, was that shell shaped sound barrier that they have at a couple of locations. I know I was at one, the Montessori Brown Beach, where they have a portable shell. I know that probably would require...
Yes, I, I looked into it. Um, spoke to the health department about different ways to make sure that the vessel level is less at that individual's house. It, I just wanted the board to know that there's a good chance that it's still doing these things. And it would be, it would be over 65, as, as the public is talking about. So, uh, we can do those things and add it help if, if, uh, if the health department pushes and says it's not a government celebration. I do want to say that I did speak to the health department when, actually, when we had to sponsor the, the, uh, the library events to take care of the one concern of that individual. And that's why the individual went to, uh, to the health department rather than through the ordinances here. Um, but I did talk to them about that. Uh, I think, I think we, we might have to, you know, have our attorneys to, to the health department about that here. Because that's not their interpretation. But again, that's, you know, that's, we can say that's our interpretation, right? Yeah. So, uh, but the angling of the speakers, uh, some of the individuals talk about, um, having it on, on their desks, you know, maybe not that, but putting a stage to face it away from the person. Uh, I can do all of those things. And I just wanted the board to, to make sure that they say, hey, go for it. Do your best to keep it down, or we're gonna go for it, or, you know, let's move it to the other location.
I just feel that we should try to, we can keep it in the same location. You know, we should try, if we have to do staff, we're technically, at least try to do, put out things that the possibilities, um, you know, go from there. As opposed to just like running to somewhere else. I think we should really try to keep it where it's been for what, the past 10 years, 14 years or so.
I have a lot of stuff to talk to you of, right there is a lot of stuff to say that's supposed to be public, specifically regarding the idea that the concerts, if anything else, bring the entire community, not the entire large portion of the community, around the library, it was figuratively and it's, it's an excellent event. You know? Um, however, I'm concerned about, uh, the risk profile of that going forward without anyone else. And my head is actually really quantifying the risks of the library going forward. When I have dealt with people that come to me, my, not in this, this specific, my talk, this, this, but in instances in my life where the people that are complaining in this manner, it has never been about the problem. It's been about that person's pathological need to complain, to get the attention. Again, that's people that are just talking about, other people that are done. It's not gonna go away. And the more we feed it, the worse it's gonna get. So if we want to go forward with this, my position would be to take a strategic approach where we relocate the immediate concerts in the near future. We engage our, nothing should go to the, nothing should go to the, nothing should go back to the county through us, the city. We should reduce our, lock down on the perspective and fight it carefully and strategically in that. My concern with risk profiling is not just the classification, because that's not fine. We could just pay that as business decision. I'm concerned escalating in a much less defensive position, and just individual claim and just individual, and it could get really, really fast. For what I experienced the best as somebody who just wants the attention. And if it's, you know, it's like when my seven year old gets upset and wants to start arguing, it's not because she wants to argue about whether or not she should go to bed. It's because she needs the attention at that moment. You know? So that's, that's the way I see it. Of course, we'll step up and see for the next concerts, I would like to see the located decision. And I would like to lock down legal counsel and understand where, where the danger is. We are not necessarily the front of the organization, we are, and anything in the government, we have our own report, we have our own logic, logic control. But we are an extension of the government entity, not a government entity, which potentially because, you know, leverage, you know, I'm pretty much certainly walking to it without having the, uh, the legal strategy in mind. So my, my opinion would be to, for this, relocate the concerts, capable, terrible facilities. And then instead of paying the health department, instead of, you know, the evil, start a family.
I'm somewhat in agreement with Mike, but I also have another way of thinking as well. Um, I'm also very concerned about the difference between a gathering at the library versus a gathering at someone's home. It's the same violation, the same for having it at an individual's home versus having it on a library floor. That's a question I have. Um, when we move to a different location, um, as was mentioned before, I think we deal with parking or ownership, um, people being confused as to where to go. The library has got a place that everyone's been going to for several years now. And to change that, I think, makes it quite difficult. Um, I also wanted to mention that this morning was when I came up with the idea and I called David immediately. I said, "This individual seems to have a thing with ordinances and violations and codes and so on." And I was really afraid that if we had this meeting in the library, that that person might call the health department and say, "I have two people in the library." That's why we're here. So I wanted to give everyone at least the idea. So I wanted to give everyone at least the opportunity, and I had any data, everyone that was involved with it, so that we were able to be here and have everyone the opportunity to speak. Because I think it's important for us all to know what's going on.
I could just respond, this actual code does not, this is industrial, commercial, public service or community service facility. So if you were talking about someone's, that would be a different code or, yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately, I'm going to disagree with you. I think we should continue with concerts at the library. Number one, I think we, libraries, people part of this community, it's so important to, to the community and to the people here that to say we're going to move less to concerts to deal with it for next year is just kicking hand down the road. I think we should just notify and report that this is what we're going to do. We can engage council, the political community or our council, and say, you know, this is our position. We feel we're, you know, we have a public celebration here. Library is, you know, is involved in so many different aspects of our community that this is one of the things that we get about every summer. How many summers have we done this?
Since twenty-fourth, eleven, eleven years.
Eleven years we've been doing this. This is a, this is a celebration we're going to do every year, seafood festival and so on. And, you know, we're not going to stop doing it because it's important to the community. And, you know, if they want to find us, fine, let them find us, and then we'll deal with it. But, you know, we can have Mr. Gill, you know, reach out and perhaps just say, you know, this is what we're doing, we feel that that exception applies to us. We're going to finish out the year with concerts. And just that, that decibel thing and all that, that's all. You can have another person next year say, oh, it's two by one. You know what I mean? It's, it's a type of thing you're never going to be able to get under control. Because, as you said, sixty-five festivals is like all. So what kind of man do you have that can really relate to this? You have to start putting, I want to get some rework, rework, putting speakers in a different direction, you know, all that kind of stuff. It does, you know, the whole community of us that's on this panel, that's part of the process of the, of the, you know, attraction, you know, as part of the community. So I just say we should, you know, continue our schedule. We can reach out to Mr. Gill, see if he has any time. I can just reach out to him to see about whether or not we should pass a resolution in the council. Basically, supporting the library in their, you know, eleven-year concert series that has been, you know, a celebration at Bellmore for, for our summer season.
You said that the, the resolution is to do concerts as they are, and we can vote.
That's what I would say, I guarantee. Continue the concerts as they are. You will, you will move to contact county health department, tell them our position, what we view as acceptable, and then see what happens. They'll either say yes, or they'll say no. Probably say no, and then they'll take it from there.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion in here? Or is this second in here, and then? Discussion, any discussion? Got a vote call?
Vote call. She wants to check the word. Say that the, the key resolution. Yes, fine, for sure.
Does the government have a current concert schedule?
Continue the, continue the concert schedule, as is.
But maybe the. We're not going to mitigate it. Now you're going to mitigate it. I mean, you're either going to mitigate it or you're not. We don't have it here for you.
Positioning, in some instances, you're going to retract a little bit of the, the.
You can put that in, I mean, practically it's not going to help. But yeah, we'll try to, you know, redirect the sound away from, you know.
Certain areas.
Certain areas. It's going to be louder in other areas.
That's okay, I imagine all that.
Yeah, and you can, I was a member, just checking to. Not, not. And then contact the county health department, health services, advise them of.
Oh, God.
And then we will speak with the council, ask you to.
So is there a second?
Yes.
Any, any discussion?
I assume they know that this is from six o'clock in the evening to eight o'clock, and then it's.
Yeah, that is, we can vote, let's have a vote first. Okay, vote call.
Okay. Mr. Blatt?
Yes.
Everybody, who's got?
Yes.
Yes. John?
Yes.
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 Is Gary?
They know eight o'clock, yeah. Any other public comments that would kind of end up in it to the mayor or say something? And anything else that you'd like to discuss? Doesn't have to be concerts. Any public comment? So, would you be in the motion?
I'll make a motion to the mayor.